The University of Wisconsin Oshkosh Fox Cities Campus assists the City of Manassia with video recordings of city meetings. Manassia residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website. To express opinions about City of Manassia issues or these broadcasts, contact the mayor's office, (920) 967-3608. Contact a city alderman. Contact information appears on the website. Or complete the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.
I'd like to call the City of Manassia Common Council meeting to order before we rise tonight. We did have a very nice event this weekend celebrating the New Year's, and I'd like to give Alderman Taylor a chance just to talk a little bit about what happened and share with us some of the pictures.
Well, it's always nice to showcase the City of Manassia. This was our 29th annual event, and you can see by the crowd there, a lot of people. I polled the crowd, and many people from Appleton and Ina and Manassia. And just thank all the departments, Public Works, Bark Department, Fire, Police Department, especially the Police Department. They really had a well-planned safety for the event and executed it very well, and we appreciate that, especially with the events that have happened in the past month around the country. So, we appreciate that. And again, thank you to our sponsor, Festival Foods, who provided the fireworks, and TLC Sign, who does our electronic countdown signs. And Channel 5 wasn't with us this year because the network out in New York, CBS Network, had an inaugural event in Nashville, and the local television stations couldn't play any local content during that show. But next year, we'll be back on live on Channel 5. So, I'd like to thank the council and everybody for approving this. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, now, after the false start, we'll call the City of Manassia Common Council meeting to order. If you could all rise and join me for the pledge.
My pledge, Regent, is to the flag of United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could have the roll, please?
Alderman Taylor. Alderman Sevenek. Alderman Langdon. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman Ted Gotti. Alderman Nichols. All are present with the absence of Alderman Tom Gotti and Alderman Ropella.
Thank you. Our first item on the agenda is the reported department head, staff, and consultants. We have the minutes and communications. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevenek.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to receive Minutes A through E and Communications F through H.
There's a motion in a second by Alderman Gotti. Is there any discussion? Alderman Taylor.
Fire Chief Cohen, I see your memo here on automatic aid, but it somewhat digresses into ambulance service, Appleton, Grand Chute. And if they go to their own paramedics, does that put us in a situation that we have to have our own paramedics?
Hold on. I'm guessing, is that yours? I can't see.
Yeah. Okay. So, what that means is, and I haven't met with the fire chief from Appleton yet, we're planning on meeting here in the next week or so. But going forward, this will happen this year yet. We're looking to hopefully start sometime by end of January. Looking further down the road into 2023, at some point, the equal service of EMS might jeopardize the auto aid based on them providing paramedic-level service, and we are at the EMR level. We do have the extra skills that are above an EMT, but we're still licensed as an EMR level service. So, I just referenced Grand Chute only because in the state, it was Nina Manassia, Grand Chute, and Appleton were the only EMR-based service in the state. Most of the other, or all the other career departments have some type of ambulance or paramedic service. And so, Grand Chute just started with paramedic engines with Gold Cross Steel Transporting. But the future is that they will be receiving ambulances as well. And then, Appleton is a little further behind in that they have more personnel and they're in the process of providing the paramedic licensing training for their firefighters. So, it sounds like they have like nine or 12 firefighters going for their paramedic license starting in fall, and then they're going to transition to paramedic engines, and then within a couple of years, an ambulance service. So, that's the only thing that I can see that would jeopardize our auto aid. But hopefully, we can reach some agreement as to the level of service being equal. I don't know what that looks like, but that's why I put that in there. That would be the only hurdle moving forward.
It seems like the ambulance company that we've had to, many, many years in the Fox Cities here, has done an outstanding job. Why would you want to move away from that? Or why would the other departments want to move away from that?
I don't want to get too political here because it's a huge political issue in both communities right now. But I think that with, like most businesses, we're having, they're having issues with keeping either paramedics, or paramedics are hard to find. And so, I think Grand Chute and Appleton's position is that they're requiring ambulances coming from either Wapaka or moving from a different to cover the Fox Valley area because of the shortage. But I don't know the whole ins and outs of that reason, but they made a case to say that their fire department would create a better service than the current provider.
We know that the service that they've provided to us, and they've had a roving service throughout many years, you get a call here, they move a unit into this area here. So, it's all about budgets and money, too. And if we have an outside service providing, as they always have, I think we need to keep that in mind. And I haven't heard anything from the public or that the service is any less than it's ever been for us. In fact, when I'm out my backyard, I hear Engine 32 go out on First Street shortly after Gold Cross goes by, shortly after Engine from One Night Street, Manitowoc Road goes by. And it's always about the same cadence that we have. And sometimes Gold Cross is even here shortly after 32 goes out. So, from my experience, just listening to all the calls and the timing of it, it seems like they're doing an excellent job. So, I would like to hear more information that maybe somebody isn't doing the job they should be doing. And certainly, we would be going to the council before we even explore the idea of going to our own paramedic units, correct?
Yeah, I agree. I didn't put that in there to say that this is what we need to do, or I just put it in there that that would be a hurdle based on our level of service versus what Appleton will provide in the future. But by no means was I referencing that we need to start looking at an ambulance.
And we haven't had the Appleton automatic aid for three and a half years. So, all right, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
So, kind of on a side note to what you guys were just talking about, typically, I get an update from Gold Cross every year. I think it's about this time of the year, if I remember correctly. And some years, we do have them come to the council, some years, we don't. It's usually every two to three years. I'll make sure that when we do get that report, we'll have a report that'll come to the council as well. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? The motion carries. Item F is public comments. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak this evening?
Tim Jacobson, 732 Paris Street. Came here tonight. I didn't make any of the budget workshops or anything, but I did sit down and listen to some of it. And one of the discussions that kind of set me back a couple steps was when there was a discussion about funding the tasers for the Police Department. And I was hoping that the comments about officers being able to hit people with their nightsticks was in jest, because that put me back a couple steps. Because I know, if everybody remembers the Rodney King, he said, "That's what happens." And half of Los Angeles was burned down after that. But the knights, I don't even know if they carry nightsticks anymore. But you can imagine going in, and nobody's going to let anybody whip on them with a stick, no matter who it is or what. They're going to defend themselves. Now, you got an officer in a fight, hand to hand, backup officers coming in, seeing it, helping. And just like that video in Los Angeles, you got two or three officers wailing on somebody, and social media showing that part. They never show what happened before or after, but it's just the officers whipping on somebody on the ground. The other end of that pendulum is their service pistols. That's deadly. Once those come out, bullets start flying, people are dead, period. I mean, if you remember the Dan Ryan in Chicago a few years ago, kid laying on the highway, being shot like 17 times. That video was, all you saw was that part of the incident. Didn't see any of the rest on social media, just those officers doing that. And neither one of those turned out well. Now, the other, when that, the middle part of that pendulum is the tasers. Now, I understand, I learned tonight that there was funding available for them, which I'm happy for. But the tasers were researched and developed by the industry to put something in the middle for those officers to use. They can hit them with the taser, put them down, get them in their cuffs without shooting, without beating, and pretty much non-lethal, but more civilized. So, I'm glad that I found out that the funding was available. I don't think, I've never, in all my years, I've never known Chief Steika or the Police Department coming in and wanting something that wasn't needed. And we always talked about putting as many tools in the toolbox for every department, and this is one of them. And I've never claimed to be the sharpest knife in the drawer, but I'd rather be shot by a taser than a Glock Gen 5. But I'm glad that you guys did eventually fund that. I think your officers are going to be better with it. And I've been in the woods enough. I know that prey will run, try to get away, and when they can't, they turn and fight till they're dead. And that's what these officers are going through. This country's in a bad situation right now, and police officers are not on everybody's Christmas list. It's tough for them out there. And every tool you can give them is needed and justified. But the taser is something that was developed to be non-lethal, to protect the officers, but yet solve crimes. And if any of this is the start of jumping on the bandwagon of defund the police, as a citizen, I recommend you don't go there. Because once that genie's out of the bottle, you're going to have the dickens of a time to get it back in. And that's been shown in recent news clips. Cities that did defund are all of a sudden seeing crime rise, and they're trying to put money back into the department. So, I know Manassia, I know all you people. I don't know a lot of the new officers, but I think Manassia's always had a good department. None of them are out there waking up in the morning, wondering if they're going to kill somebody today. They're here to help us, protect us, and the community is better because of them. So, thank you for the funding. Keep it up. I think I'm not unhappy with my tax bill. I would pay a little more to make sure everybody had good health care. I think that's very important. There are employees, too, but it only takes a fraction of a second for that 60,000-pound truck or a squad car on an emergency run to be in the middle of an intersection when they had the red light, because they're thinking of family health care. Take care of your employees, and they'll take care of us. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else this evening? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the consent agenda. There's only one item tonight, the minutes. Do we have a motion for the minutes? Alderman Sevenek.
I was going to joke, Mayor, it's safe.
You want to separate them?
As a favor to you, I'm going to make a motion to accept all of the consent agenda items today.
I think you should separate them today.
So, I'll make a motion that we approve the Common Council minutes of 12, 20, 21.
There's a motion in a second by Alderman Taylor. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Item I is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll. Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of December 17 through December 30, 2021, in the amount of $802,884.31.
There's a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Sevenek.
I just want to take this opportunity to thank Jennifer, the police chief, Corey Gordon, the mayor, for getting back to me. I had a number of issues pertaining to accounts payable, payroll, and everybody responded and gave me my answers, and I appreciate it.
Thanks. Anyone else? Seeing no one, if we could have a roll call vote, please? Item 2 is the beverage operators' license applications. Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the beverage operators' license applications for the 2021 through '23 licensing period, as listed under approved in the clerk's memo dated December 30, 2021.
There's a motion in a second by Alderman Gotti. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries 6-0.
Item 3 is a motion to reconsider the denial of an operator's license to previous meeting. This would take a two-thirds vote to pass, and there's no discussion on motions to reconsider.
Is it two-thirds of those present?
Two-thirds of those present, according to our council rules, yes. Alderman Langdon.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I called the mayor and told him that I will make the motion to reconsider. I got a phone call, and then I made a different phone call today. So, I'm going to give this person a chance to speak to us again. And from what I understand, that you've put some things in place. So, if you would please stand up there.
No, not at this, not at this point yet. So, first, we need to make a motion to reconsider, and then that motion will be back on the floor.
Okay.
If it passes.
Okay. So, all right, I'll make the motion to reconsider beverage operators' license application for Ashish Pudal. As per council, no debate. Okay, thank you.
Is there a second? There's a motion in a second. If we could have a roll call vote, two-thirds of the people present is for...
No, this is to approve?
No, this is just to bring the item back to the table, and then we'll discuss it again.
Motion carries 5-1.
So, now, on the floor is the motion to deny. Okay. So, there's a motion to deny on the floor, and if you want, would they amend it, or would they vote against it and then make a new motion? Okay. Okay, so if you wish, so right now, what's on the floor is a motion to deny. That was what the motion was at the last meeting?
Yeah, it was.
Yes, it was.
I made a motion to approve that license.
Okay.
But I thought it ended up there wasn't enough.
Okay, so there's a motion to approve on the floor, so then it makes life much easier. So, if you wish to change your vote and approve this, you would vote then in affirmative. If you wish to deny it, then you'd vote no, because you're voting to not approve it. So, Alderman Sevenek?
Alderman Langdon earlier stated that he was going to ask someone from the gallery to be able to speak on the topic. I think it's of interest, so I'll move for unanimous consent to allow that individual to speak.
Sure. So, the applicant is here this evening? If either of you would like to speak this evening, you're welcome to do so at this point.
Hi, everyone.
But if I could have you come up to the...
Applicant or me? I'm honored, he's applicant. You need to speak into the mic. He's applicant.
So, if we could get your name for the record and your address?
My address? My name is Assis Pudel. I'm, say, 1005 Lurican Apartment 20. I'm a little bit confused. I check my...
Okay.
105 Lurican Drive Apartment 2C, Manassia.
Okay. And Mark, did you want to ask him something? Or, okay.
Thank you. So, through my discussions with the owner and chief of police, Tim, today talking to him, I'm understand, I understand that there is some things you put in place to help, so that there isn't underage selling. If I could hear that, please.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. This is Budi Subedi. I am owner of the gas station 209 Resinist State, Manassia, Wisconsin. I've been doing this business since 2005, and there has, you know, I've been, I'm doing everything, every compliance, whatever the city needs. And this time, I'm just requesting you, every guy, you know about the pandemic time, pandemic, and then I tried to, like the, he's, the operator, he was working on the gas station. At that time, like he got underage, cutting the police officer. And then, like before that, on the passport system, whatever, I have a system on the passport, like some of the employee who are working, they can bypass, like, you know, if they are asking, whatever, what is the date of birth? And then, they can say yes or no, just they can say yes. If they are eligible, they can say yes and bypass the date of birth. Now, the employee, when I got the kind of, a lot of issues coming up, and I'm not attending only one gas station, I have some others, too. And then, a lot of other people also starting to little bit complain, you know, some of the underage people also buying the gas, buying the liquor from my gas station, I got that kind of complaint. And then, just a week or 10 days ago, I called the U.S. Petroleum Equiments. I told them, anyone who ever working on the gas station employee, they cannot bypass the date of birth. They have to put the date of birth on the passport, and then that goes through. Otherwise, you know, if that is the underage, if they didn't put the date of birth and just tried to bypass, that not allow nowadays. That secure me and secure everyone, secure like the underage, you know, they cannot buy anything else from my promises. That kind of thing I developed. And then, he's also, at the beginning, he was not trained well, like, you know, I'm not saying not trained well, you know, he passed, he has a bartender 360 training, but I don't know, somehow, he cut off at that time. And he also filled out the application, there's all the no, no, no. He made a, you know, like kind of mistake, that innocent mistake on the application. And then, also, he made a, there was two tickets. Normally, if we something, if we something do wrong, only one ticket we are paying, like for the city of Manassia. There was two tickets, one for the tobacco and one for the alcohol at the same time. And we, somehow, we missed the alcohol tickets payments. And then, we got another notice from the city of Manassia Police Department saying, hey, you have, this kind of payment is due, otherwise, we seize the property or something. And then, I came right away to the police officer, and we paid that payments. And from my side, you know, I'll do my best, you know, I am a U.S. citizen, you know, I'm doing as much as whatever the United States make it while, and I'm also doing the 501(c), one of the volunteer organizations. I'm a president of United States of our Neblis community, you know, we hold the 400,000 peoples, you know, I visit all around the United States to help the people, wherever they need asylum or refugees. And I am also making, train him, he will not making any mistake on the futures. That's my goal. Thank you, everyone, listening my word. And if you need anything, question for him.
Okay, so, your goal, I am about second chances. You know, you're known throughout everywhere, underage, if they say, hey, we need to get some booze, they know to come to your place. So, you may only get, you're only going to get, if this passes, you're only going to get one more chance, and I can guarantee you, this council will work to shut you down.
Absolutely, thank you. Like sometime, like they, we are, they are like, you know, just the past also, if you are, if you are looking at it, on the 17 years, my business history, you know, I've been here since 2005. I think sometime, they got tickets for the cigarettes or mine, like looks like, you know, my employee, they are, you know, 21 years, they think that there is a 21 years. At that time, there was 18 years, now they're 21 years. And then, maybe a couple of times, they got a, I don't know how many times, but sometime, every station, they are also getting the ticket fine. But now, my station, you know, I'm thinking, I'll be fine on the futures, you know. And the 17 years period of the time, since 2005, I didn't get any issues. But now, I am also aware about my station. I'll do my best. I'll do my best.
Well, you're going to have to.
Yes.
It's not, I'll do my best.
Yes.
Because you'll get shut down.
Sure.
So, and you're going to be watched heavily.
Sure.
Which should be.
Sure.
We got to get that, oh, go to Marathon Liquor in Manassia and buy booze, we can get it. We got to stop that.
No, yes.
So, you're only going to, you may, if I vote, you may only get one more chance, and that's it.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you. Budi, what form of ID does your stores allow as a formal ID? What do you accept as an ID?
Farhan, one more time?
What form of identification to buy... What form of identification to buy alcohol do you accept at your store?
State ID and driver license.
Okay. And not on other piece of paper or something?
No, no, like, we need to scan on the scan code, you know, if there are barcode on that one, that, that also we accept, but that is normally state ID and driver license.
Okay. And then I had a couple of questions for the young man here. How old do you have to be to buy cigarettes?
If they're more than 21.
And how old do you have to be to buy alcohol?
More than 21.
Okay. And I guess last time, you had somebody speaking for you, and I think a lot of us thought that maybe you could communicate as well as we thought or something. And so you're, you feel that you can operate behind this counter properly and distribute only to people over 21 for alcohol?
Yes, I can do that. I will do my best.
Okay. You know, because we take this very serious, because...
Just I got that problem, then after that, I take ID for everyone now, just I do my best now.
Yeah. You know, I'm the oldest guy up here, so if I come in, make sure you ask me for our, my ID card. If you ask everybody, like some of the other stations do, then you can't make a mistake. So that's what you need to do. And I wouldn't take offense if you asked me. I take it as a compliment. And do you feel that, what we feel up here is, if you serve a minor, and they go down the highway, they get in a terrible car accident, somebody gets killed or something, that's what can happen. That's how serious this is, and that's why we take this serious, because if it happens, somebody's going to come back up here and say, we lost this loved one because of this council approved somebody. So we just wanted to make sure. Last week, I wasn't sure that you were understanding the process, and I think we are now, and also with Budi putting in some extra, a larger safety net for this, and I appreciate that. Is there anything else you'd like to say to us?
Nothing.
Thank you. Thank you.
Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. A question for Chief Steika. Oh, great, there's a microphone back there. In our packet, there are documents still recommending the denial of this license for this applicant. Is it still the police department's recommendation to deny this license?
It's kind of a loaded question, so...
Well, it's, I'm, I'm sorry, I mean, it says staff's recommendation, and...
Yeah. So the police department's recommendation is based upon the council rules, and the council rules do indicate that because the applicant was not forthright on the application, your rules say that they should be denied. So that is what the police department's opinion is based upon the council's rules. If you're asking me my opinion beyond that, that's a different question, but based upon what our obligation is in the process of the veracity of the application, we just report what we find to you folks.
Yes, and in the interest of the folks who might be listening or, and are here in the gallery this evening, can you review why this was recommended for denial?
Yes. I'm sorry.
Can you review why it was originally came to us as the recommendation?
I thought you said, did I?
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you? Thank you.
So the, the applicant was working at a time where an underage person came into the establishment, purchased alcohol as well as cigarettes. This was not part of a sting or a compliance check, as we've talked about. An on-duty officer happened to see the, the person who made the purchase leave the establishment and confronted them, because they clearly did not appear to be 21. They did confirm that the person was not 21, and the person who made the purchase, as well as the person who sold, both, all, both parties received summonses for the offenses. So there was a, the tickets issued, one was paid, as has been explained, and one was not, so a warrant was issued. And when the applicant then filled out the application, one of the questions is, have you been convicted of an alcohol-related offense? And the applicant put no.
And this sale to underagers happened within the last six months, correct, or so?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
You bet.
And as Chief stated, this was recommended for denial based on the rules established by the common council, which are in our packet. And we, as the common council, have an obligation to keep our community safe as well. It is still recommended that this applicant be denied their license based on the circumstances, and I will vote that way. I hope that all of you consider the implications of approving the license, because when, because there are other businesses in this community that may also come back here, and we should have followed the rules established by the common council and also have pretty firm boundaries when it comes to these things. Thank you.
Alderman Sevigny.
Thank you. It's not as simple as Alderman Nichols stated this evening, and I'm going to tell you why. These are our rules, and we act as quasi-judicial judges here, and that's what I did. I totally agree with everything that the police department did. When they came in and they, they, they looked at the rules and said, this is what happened, and the applicant must be truthful and fill out the application completely. Under the City of Manassia policy guidelines for liquor licenses, you have violated guideline for, therefore, which, by the way, was, was not truthful on their application. After the last meeting, I personally came to my own personal conclusion that there was a misunderstanding in language, and that that's why there was a mistake. I don't think there was any intent to personally try to lie to the city. If that's the case, then you definitely, I, I would be the first one to say, you're not getting a license. So that's why I took the position as, as I did, acting as a judge, listening to you, listening to your employer, listening to your, the past individual that was here, and realize that, yes, you can do this job. Basically, you scan things. Your, your outfit comes up and tells you that, you know, here's how much change you give back. It's simple. Language is a barrier, and I accepted that, and that's the reason I made my decision. I don't take this lightly in any manner, and if another, let's say, a tavern or something sold to a minor and then lied on their application and lived in the city of Manassia their whole life, I would think that they're lying to me. So therefore, I'm going to vote in the affirmative to allow for him to have his license. But remember what you heard from my colleagues this evening, from Alderman Langdon and Alderman Taylor. Be careful. You see a guy our age, you check everybody. You guys are on the line here, you check everybody. And I think you do understand the seriousness of this. So I'll prove this, this evening, but like Alderman Langdon says, comes back, it's not going to be pretty already. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, the vote is to approve.
Motion carries four two.
Okay, so you were approved then this evening, and you can pick up your license, correct, to clerk? Okay. So you indicated if you wanted it mailed or picked up, and you can do that, whichever you indicated then. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Item J is held over business. There are two items. The first item, Director Schrader is the oldest evening, so we were, based with vacations and the holidays, it was hard for us to get together between the developers and staff. They did, they still do have a couple of things to clean up, so they're just requesting that we hold off on this and postpone that till the next meeting. So there'd be...
Want a motion to that?
Yep. A motion would be best.
On one and two.
Well, two, I would, we'll do them separately, if you want to postpone two as well, but... James, did you want to make that motion, or?
Go ahead. Go ahead. Change your mic.
I'll make a motion to call over the development agreement between the city of Manassia and Aitken's Development Group for development of Woodland Lakes Cottage's development.
Postpone till the next meeting.
So, so what I heard was a motion to postpone till the January 17th meeting. Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Item two is the Strong Neighborhoods Program, and that is ready to be taken action on, if you wish to do that this evening. Alderman Taylor.
I would like to postpone this till the director is back.
You can do that as well? What's your point of order?
I believe I postponed it at the last council meeting. I don't know if you can continually postpone it.
Sure.
I got a specific date, so probably you could then.
Sure.
You would just postpone it again this time, but it does take a vote in the majority to do so. So there's a motion to postpone till the 17th. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion is postponed. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Seeing no one, I will accept a motion to adjourn. Is there, all those in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you.
The University of Wisconsin Oshkosh Fox City's campus assists the city of Manassia with video recordings of city meetings. Manassia residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website, www.cityofmanassia-wy.gov. To express opinions about City of Manassia issues or these broadcasts, contact the mayor's Contact a city alderman. Contact information appears on the website. Or complete the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.